Clearly, these plants affect not only the health of every citizen, every resident of the city of Chicago, but the entire region. But no community is affected more than the communities that are home to these plants, the Pilsen and Little Village neighborhood. Good morning, everybody. My name is Joe Moore. I'm the alderman of the 49th Ward and the proud lead sponsor of the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance. We are here today because we are going to conduct a hearing on this ordinance. Ten months ago, I, together with several of my colleagues, introduced this ordinance in the Chicago City Council. fire power plants in the city of Chicago, the Fisk Plant and the Crawford Plant, on the city's southwest side, to be cleaned up. Specifically, it calls for additional restrictions on the fine particulate matter, i.e. soot, that these plants spew into the air. These plants have been, by a number of researchers and studies that have been conducted, have been shown to be one of the leading causes of the high rate of respiratory diseases that occur in our city, asthma in particular. And one research by a team of Harvard scientists determined that every year, these plants contribute to 30 premature deaths. So it is absolutely imperative, imperative, that we pass this ordinance. In addition, the ordinance calls for significant reductions in the amount of carbon dioxide that these two plants emit. These plants are the single most greatest stationary causes of carbon dioxide and global warming gases in the city of Chicago region. We must take steps to protect our planet and to protect future generations by putting these restrictions on these plants. At a time when the federal government and the state government have abrogated their responsibilities to protect for the public health and welfare, it is incumbent upon those of us, the members of the Chicago City Council and the mayor, the elected officials closest to people, to step up to the plate and protect the health and well-being of our residents. That is exactly what this ordinance does. The one problem, unfortunately, however, is that there's been a lot of delay and a lot of obfuscation. It's been 10 long months. Quite often, when you introduce an ordinance, you have a hearing almost immediately. For 10 long months, we have waited for a hearing, and for 10 long months, we have not had a hearing. And so today, we are going to have that hearing. Myself and a number of my colleagues have formed an ad hoc committee that will hear testimony, that will be giving voice to those who are fighting for the health of their residents, are fighting for the health of their neighbors, will give voice to those who are concerned about the future of our planet and the global warming gases that these plants emit every single day into our air. And so I'm very proud to have 16 co-sponsors. We had 18, but two of them have retired, so we'll have to talk with their replacements. But we have 16 aldermen who have signed on to this ordinance. One of the aldermen with us today, a man who cares deeply about his neighborhood, a man who cares deeply about the health of each and every resident in our great city, Alderman Roboiris. Ariel, please say a few words.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. First of all, I want to say that on behalf of the 30th Ordinance constituents, I'm here to support this ordinance. I commend my colleague, Joe Moore, for doing this, because I believe that everyone is entitled to breathe clean air. We have not done that for a long time, and it's about time that Chicago, the leading municipality in the country, should follow by example. Yo como padre de tres amáticos que vivían en mi casa pienso que no es justo que nosotros no podemos respirar aire limpio y fresco. El municipio Chicago, un municipio global, debemos detener aire limpio, y por eso yo apoyo esta ordenanza. Muchas gracias a todos. I want to thank my colleague, all 16 or 18 that signed on, because I think it's time that we take the initiative and move Chicago to the number two, but number one in the country. We need clean air. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alderman. And we will be joined at the hearing by several of my other colleagues, Alderman Joe Moreno, Alderman Scott Wagusback, to name just two. And we anticipate Alderman Sharon Dixon will also be joining us today. So Alderman Eugene Schulter, also as indicated, he's a co-sponsor, and he will be attending the hearing as well. With us also, and someone who will be testifying a little bit later today, is someone who is well-known to those of us who've been in city government for a while. He was the first commissioner of the city's Department of Environment, someone who's been a champion for good health and for a cleaner environment, the head of the Natural Resources Defense Council here in the city of Chicago, former Commissioner Henry Henderson.
Thank you, Alderman. We are here to strongly support the passage of this ordinance. It is absolutely essential that municipalities and cities take the lead where there has been a gulf in leadership on the federal and state level. The ability of cities to take care of their own citizens is absolutely at the front of real leadership in our nation. The city of Chicago is blessed with a home rule power that puts it equal to the state and federal government with regard to the ability to protect the health and safety of its citizens. This ordinance goes to the heart of that. We have two plants within the city of Chicago which are in violation of the federal law, have done things at their plants which should have triggered best available control technology, and in the city of Chicago, which has some of the worst air in the entire country, that is a burden to public health and safety. These plants are a major source of that problem, and they need to clean up or close. That's what we think the city needs to lead on, and this ordinance provides a clear pathway to moving this forward of cleanup or closure that is absolutely essential to self-government, democracy, and the health and safety of our city. So we strongly support it and look forward to the hearing today, and hopefully that that moves forward, the city council, to move this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And we've been joined by a great alderman who's only been on the council a short time, but has already blazed a trail for political reform and for protecting the health and safety of each and every citizen in this city. He's not only a great alderman, he's also a great father, because he was dropping his kids off to school, which is why he's a few minutes late. But I would present to you now Alderman Joe Moreno.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here to support not only this local issue, but really global issue. And that's how we have to, as an environmentalist, I know we all look at that, you know, act locally and think globally, but this actually, if we act on this, is going to be a global measure in terms of polluting not only our city and state, but our neighboring cities and our neighboring states. I bought my first hybrid car in 2003, and I'm proud of it, because I think that when you are supporting ordinances like this, you also have to support this kind of environmentalism in your daily life. And I think this is a no-brainer, the Clean Power Ordinance. I think it's not a job killer if people talk about that. That's a scare tactic. It's not a job killer. It will help our environment, not only our environment, but the safety and the health of the residents in our city as well. So I'm proud to support it. I thank Alderman Moore for leading on this issue, and Alderman Roboiris for being here today. And support our ordinance. Get behind, if your alderman's not on it right now, please encourage him to do so, because I think this is going to be not only great for the city, but great for the state of Illinois and the greater Midwest and our country. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Alderman. Clearly, these plants affect not only the health of every citizen, every resident of the city of Chicago, but the entire region. But no community is affected more than the communities that are home to these plants, the Pilsen and Little Village neighborhood. And with us from the Little Village neighborhood has been a fighter on behalf of her neighbors, on behalf of her people, on behalf of her community, Kim Wasserman of the Little Village Environmental Justice Organization. Kim, thank you for being here.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Again, my name is Kim Wasserman, and as a community directly impacted by the Crawford Plant, and more importantly, by all of Midwest generation's coal power plants, we are here today to show support for the Clean Power Ordinance. We applaud Alderman Moore and all 16 supporting Alderman in moving this ordinance forward. And we're here today because we recognize the fact that for the last 10 years, our communities have been fighting. For the last 10 years, our communities have been struggling to breathe. For the last 10 years, we've been calling out for help, and we are so thankful and so blessed to have all of these people here in the room today and all of the political support that we have, because without all of you and without the aldermen, we would not be here today. And so first and foremost, I thank all of you for being here, and I thank all of the people behind me and all the people who support. And I would ask all those folks that are out there that don't know about this ordinance, as Alderman Moreno said, you need to get on the phone, you need to go to your alderman's office, and you need to demand that they support the Clean Power Ordinance, because this is the way that we need to be rolling in the future. As a city, we need to replace these outdated energy sources that are life-threatening. We have with us a stack of letters from students at Farragut, Juarez, Little Village Academy, every possible school that you can think of. We have students who have been voicing their support day after day, year after year, because all they want is the right to breathe. That's all we're asking for. These new standards will help protect the health of folks all over Chicago, and as you will see in today's hearing, the support is city-wide. The reality is, the clean energy will rebuild not just our communities, but it will rebuild the manufacturing and the construction industry. We need jobs. America needs jobs, but at the same time, we need clean energy and we need clean air. And so we're here today not only to say thank you, but we're also here today to ask for a moment of silence, because there are too many people who are dying every day in Chicago, not just in Little Village, but in Pilsen. Every day, people are dying because they cannot get a breath of clean air. And so what I would ask is if we can take a moment of silence, 30 seconds, directly right behind you, you will see gravestones and some candles that have been put out in honor of the people who have passed before us. And I would just ask if folks can take 30 seconds and just think of those souls that have passed and give them some positive energy. And again, we're here today to say thank you, but more importantly, we're here to bring our voices together as one and demand that the administration move forward and make a decision and let this hearing do what it needs to do, which is clean up the air for all of us, get rid of an old, dirty fossil fuel, a company that's running on 19th-century technology. We need to get with the program. We need to be the green city that we have the capability of being. And as residents, we need to come together and make that demand. So thank you very much, and I'm going to ask one question. What do we want?
Clean air!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Clean air!
When do we want it?
Now!
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. It has been 10 long months. People are anxious to give voice to their concerns. This hearing today gives them that opportunity, an opportunity that has been denied, unfortunately, by the Daley administration and the Daley administration's allies in the city council. We want a hearing, we deserve a hearing, and we're going to have a hearing today so that the voices of the people can be heard. So thank you so much for coming out today. As soon as this conference is over, we will ask you to proceed orderly to the city council chambers, and we'll instruct you as to if you want to testify, how you go about doing that. But in the interim, I'd be more than happy to entertain, or my colleagues and the other speakers would be happy to entertain any questions from our friends in the media.
Joe, how do you like your chances for passage now at this time, and why?
Well, I think the chances for passage are excellent. Even if Mayor Daley is not concerned about the stain on his legacy of being a Green Mayor, and quite frankly, the fact that this ordinance hasn't moved forward is an ugly stain on a legacy that is otherwise, for the most part, fairly admirable. We know that the next mayor of the city will make sure this gets passed. Three of the four candidates for mayor have all indicated support for this ordinance. The fourth candidate, the one who is currently the frontrunner, has voiced strong support for the principles underlying this ordinance that has earned him the support of the Sierra Club. So I am absolutely confident that with the continued support of the people in this room and the support of my colleagues, that if we don't pass this ordinance before the end of this administration, that it will be passed under the next administration.
Because this is an ad hoc committee that's holding this hearing, how does it get to the council floor?
Well, with the good work of the people in this room, quite frankly, Craig, as you know, we certainly can have a hearing and use the council chambers to give voice to the people, the city council chambers, which is the chambers that belong to the people. But obviously, this ordinance is actually in a joint committee of health and energy and environment and utilities. We have not had a joint hearing despite many, many requests, many, many demands that we have that joint hearing. So we're going to do that here today. And with the continued help of the people in this room, who will phone their aldermen, particularly since we are in election season, and tell them that their support for this is absolutely vital for determining who they're going to vote for in the elections coming up in February and the runoffs in April, I'm very, very confident we'll get this passed.
Joe, why don't you give us such a whole air opinion, why do you think maybe 10 months you can get here?
Well, you know, quite frankly, I think the question is better directed to the fifth floor of City Hall, where the mayor resides. I really don't know. I can't figure it out. I can't figure out why a mayor who has advocated for Chicago to be the leading green city in the United States won't embrace this issue. This is something that, to me, is a no-brainer, that will help cement his legacy as truly a mayor who cares about the health of the citizens of this city and cares about the environment. So quite frankly, I think the question needs to be directed to the mayor.
Joe, what are you doing? You need to get a handle. Part of the good work of the people in this room, what do you do to get a handle?
Well, it's not so much what I do, quite frankly, it's what the people in this room do, and what the residents throughout the city do. Because the only way that historically legislation gets passed in the city of Chicago that does not initially have the support of the administration is through grassroots public pressure. And they have been doing a great job. We started out with just a small handful of aldermen in support of this. We were up to 18. Two of my colleagues left the council, we're down to 16, but I'm very confident that their replacements, and we're speaking of Alderman Ed Smith and Alderman Tony Preckwinkle, are equally progressive and equally care about the environment. And I'm confident, the only reason we don't include them is because they haven't been formally asked. But I'm fairly confident that they will support the ordinance, and then all we really need is eight more, which I believe is quite possible. We have a number of candidates who are running against incumbents, who are running on this issue, and that'll hopefully convince some of my colleagues, if they are reelected, to do the right thing and to support this ordinance.
Why did the state and the federal regulators drop the law? I know it's a tough question to answer.
Well, it is a tough question, and again, like the question about why this hasn't moved forward, that question should have been directed to the mayor. That one should be directed to the federal authorities. I do know that we are very proud to have the support of some of our congressmen and congresswomen, Jan Schakowsky and Mike Quigley have presented written statements. They're not able to attend today, but there'll be written statements of support that will be presented to the hearing today. So anyway, thank you so much for coming out, and we look forward to a very informative and productive hearing today. So I encourage everyone to move over to the council chambers, and we'll get started promptly at 10 o'clock. Thank you very much for being out here.
Thank you for being here today on this momentous occasion. As I indicated at the press conference outside, we are finally taking matters into our own hands and having a hearing and giving people a voice, because for whatever reasons, the powers that be here at City Hall are unwilling to give the people a voice. So we're going to give it to you today. Just want to make very clear that we have extended invitations to Commissioner Malik McKenna, Midwest Generation, Commonwealth Edison, and we have either neither received a response, or they have politely declined the opportunity to be here and testify today. So we're, just want to make sure that we are trying to be fair to all individuals. With us today, on my right, Alderman Joe Moreno from the 1st Ward, Alderman Ray Cologne from the 35th Ward, Alderman Walter Burnett from the 27th Ward, and Walter, you got some Some constituents are here, and Alderman Ariel Roboiris from the 30th Ward. I think maybe one of the reasons Alderman Burnett received round of applause is that he is now our 17th co-sponsor. And we thank you for being here, Walter. He's a courageous alderman who's not afraid to take on the tough issues if he believes it's for the best interest of the people he represents, and that's why he's here today, and that's why he's been not only here today on behalf of the health and behalf of the planet, but he's also been a fighter for affordable housing, and I've been proud to stand side-by-side with him on that. So before we begin testimony, I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues would like to say any additional words today on behalf of the ordinance? Men of few words, very rare in our profession. Well, we'll get started right now, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to take witnesses three at a time. We've got some chairs here. This is the witness chair right there. That's the hot seat. And so I'd like to call the first three witnesses. They will be Henry Henderson, Kimberly Wasserman, and Dr. Peter Oris. Would you please come on up? Commissioner, once a commissioner, always a commissioner, Henry, so Commissioner Henderson will speak first. There we go. All right, Commissioner, thank you so much for being here today. Commissioner Henry Henderson, many of you know, was the city's first commissioner for the Department of Environment when the department was created by the mayor and a city council back in the early to mid-1990s. What year was that, do you recall, Commissioner?
1991.
1991, first year I was on a city council. So Commissioner Henderson, thank you for honoring us with your presence, and we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to come to the city council. I haven't been here for a very long time. Last time, I think I was defending a budget, and it was... Thank you very much for having me. I'll just say that.
He's out of practice.
Yeah, exactly. It's interesting, Alderman, that you just mentioned 1991. One of the reasons we very strongly support the passage of this ordinance is that it is time for the city to take a strong leadership in favor of clean, reliable energy. I think this ordinance makes a major step toward doing that, and it's been in a context of a very long time that we've been aware that these two plants in the city of Chicago, which are very old plants, that are not in compliance with federal law, with the Clean Air Act, and are being litigated over their lack of compliance with Clean Air Act, are also a major block on reliability within the city of Chicago with regard to energy. In 1991, the city council passed a franchise with Commonwealth Edison, and part of that franchise identified these two plants as a chokehold on reliability for energy within the city of Chicago. And the idea was that investments would be made to free the city of Chicago from reliance upon them. This has not yet been achieved. In addition to which, we have the Clean Air Act, which presumes that these plants would be closed by now because of impact on public health and safety. That too has not been done. It is time for leadership to come forward and remove the block on reliability, on the economy, and on the public health and safety. These plants basically are being subsidized by the public health and safety of the people of Chicago. Children with asthma are subsidizing these plants with their lungs, and it is time that this be stopped. What this ordinance does is provides a clear pathway toward removing two of the major sources of threat to the public health and safety with regard to particulate matter 2.5, which is a very, very, very small particulate matter that is emitted by these plants. That is what gets into people's lungs and creates a major problem on children's health and adults and people with health problems generally. It is a very local concern. It is exactly within what the city of Chicago should be taking leadership on, and this ordinance moves us in that path. The other thing it deals with is carbon dioxide, which is a global endangerment for which there are no standards whatsoever. So these are completely unregulated pollutants. This puts the city in the position of being a global leader on bringing that into control and provides a pathway of cleanup or close down, which is what we need. We strongly support this, and we'd like to see it move forward within the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I bring up our next witness, I just want to indicate that we have received statements, written statements, from both Congressman Quigley and Congresswoman Schakowsky, written statements in support of the ordinance. They were unable to be here today because of pressing business in Washington, D.C., but Congresswoman Schakowsky, I will not, because we have a long set of witnesses, I won't take the time to read the statements into the record, however, perhaps the Clean Power Coalition could put them on their website for you to read. But essentially, Congresswoman Schakowsky acknowledged that the federal government has fallen short and that it really is incumbent upon localities like the city of Chicago to step up and do what the federal government hasn't done, and that is protect the health and welfare of their citizens. And Congressman Quigley has wrote very eloquently about the dangers of reliance on coal for power generation, and his statement as well will be available at both my office and on the Clean Power Chicago website. All right. Kim, before you speak, just to make sure that we move forward, can Dr. Peter Oris come up and be in the batter's box? And... Oh, he's already there. Good job. How about, after that, we're going to hear from Sarah Lovinger. Okay. Ms. Wasserman, please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Kimberly Wasserman. I'm the executive director at the Little Village Environmental Justice Organization. First and foremost, thank you very much, city council members, for allowing us to be here and to give testimony as to why this ordinance is so important. Really quickly, I come from a neighborhood of about 95,000 people, of which half of them are under the age of 25, and every day, we are being directly impacted both through the smokestacks and through the mountain of coal that sits in the back of our neighborhood that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Our health is at stake, our environment is at stake, and every day, we are paying the price. As a mother of three who live less than half a mile from these coal power plants, I constantly worry about whether or not my children can breathe. Three out of, two out of my three children have asthma, and I don't think it's fair that on top of everything else we have to worry about, my biggest concern is whether or not my kids can breathe today, whether or not they're going to need their medication. I don't blame the coal power plant, per se, for causing their asthma, but they are a huge impact on my children and my children's right to breathe clean air. I am asking that the city council take action, because our federal government is not doing so, they're not moving fast enough, and they're allowing dirty coal to lead the charge instead of allowing our rights as people to lead the charge. We have a chance here to show how the city of Chicago works and how we can work as a democracy and move a people's agenda forward, and the people's agenda being the right for clean air. These are outdated plants that are being run into the ground for the sake of money, and my children's health, along with everybody's health here, is not worth that money. We are doing our part as a community to lessen our reliance on coal power plants. We're doing energy efficiency, we're doing weatherization, we're doing our part, and we're asking that the city of Chicago do its part. And so I have a letter from a student at Benito Juarez High School, which I will read in closing. Dear Mayor Daley, my name is Mercedes Lewis. I am 18 years old, and I attend Benito Juarez Community Academy High School. I am currently a junior. My high school happens to be down the street from Fisk Coal Power Plant. On an average week, I spend about 40 hours at school. Even though I don't live here in Pilsen, I still attend school here and hang out with my friends. I am concerned about my health and my friends' health when it comes to the power plant. I truly believe that you should consider getting the power plant cleaned up. We all deserve the right to breathe fresh, clean air. We all deserve the right to breathe fresh, clean air. And I highly suggest that something be done or changed. Sincerely, Mercedes Lewis. And these letters go on and on and on. And again, we thank the city council for this opportunity, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you.[613.82][613.82](applause) And, Kim, one thing I neglected to do is, of course, if any of my colleagues have any questions of you or any of the other witnesses, I should have mentioned that when Commissioner Henderson was up, feel free to weigh in. So, any questions? One last thing.
I just wanted to say that we were very instrumental in getting Alderman Munoz on board. And we have 10 more aldermen. So, folks, please remember that. We have 10 more aldermen that we need to go after. So if we can get together and work on that, that would be great.
Actually, only nine now. All right. And in the wings, we'd like to call up Patricia Mendez, please. Hey, will you please identify yourself for the record and your organizational affiliation, if any?
My name is Peter Oris. I'm a physician. I specialize in occupational environmental medicine. I'm a professor at the University of Illinois School of Public Health. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Doctors Council of the Service Employees International Union, which represents some 500 attending physicians within the Cook County Hospital and healthcare system. First, before I start it, I wanted to congratulate you, Alderman, and your colleagues for having this hearing today and raising this very important issue to the public's attention. We really appreciate it. Our union has participated in many preventive programs, as have the members, both within the hospitals and clinics of Cook County and in the communities from which our patients live. Yet this public health problem generated the increasing rate, alarming increasing rate of asthma and other respiratory diseases in Chicago has not been solved. As you are aware, Fisk and Crawford coal plants are located in the heart of the densely populated Little Village and Pilsen neighborhoods and release tons of particulate matter and particulate matter-forming gases and tons of greenhouse gases into the air annually. These two coal-fired plants are surrounded by a high percentage of low-income minority residents within three miles, a community with high rates of asthma and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. And all but one other coal-fired plant in the country, they are situated in communities more dense than most other plants in the country. The young and elderly, apparently those living close to the plants, are most at risk for asthma, chronic bronchitis, heart attacks, lung cancer, and strokes caused by this particulate emission. And lest anybody think this is pure speculation or other... These are all health effects that are well documented to be associated with particulate matter and that matter released by these coal-fired plants. Particulate matter released by these plants causes and/or exacerbates serious pulmonary cardiopulmonary disease, including at least 347 deaths in the Chicago region annually, as well as 264 respiratory hospital admissions and 548 heart attacks. And this is according to the peer-reviewed methodology that is in use by the Environmental Protection Agency, as well as the National Academy of Sciences. In addition, in 2001, there was a peer-reviewed study published in the literature by Dr. Levy and coworkers at Harvard School of Public Health that shows that the nine coal-fired plants in northern Illinois were the cause of approximately 320 deaths annually. And data provided by the authors to us shows that the emissions from Fisk and Crawford Power Plant alone were responsible for up to 41 of these deaths and 500 emergency room visits. The 2,800 asthma attacks annually are also predicted, are also estimated to be contributed to by the releases from these plants. The Chicago Clean Power Ordinance, being considered by the city council, will require a reduction in these particulate limits and equivalent to the standard set now for new coal-fired power plants. And will limit the CO2 emissions, which is the equivalent to that of a natural gas plant. This should markedly reduce the deaths and disease produced by exposure to the waste products of these plants. We urge you to support the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance and encourage its prompt passage by the city council. We note the support of this ordinance as well by other professional organizations in our area, including the Chicago Medical Society, the Respiratory Health Association of Metropolitan Chicago, and as you will soon hear from Dr. Lovinger from the Chicago Physicians for Social Responsibility. Again, I thank you for holding these hearings and appreciate very much the attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Question from my colleague. Alderman Cologne?
Dr. Oris, I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on this peer-reviewed study and what methods are used in order to make this determination with regards to these numbers?
Yes, and I can give you a copy of it. It's a study that was done estimating the admissions over a period of time, looking at the calculations of, that we know, of PM 2.5 and PM 10 releases. And what we know is the dose-response relationship with respect to the increases in exacerbations of asthma, as well as these other health effects. And when you take that from one study and now apply it here with the amount being released is where they get that calculation from. Happy to supply it to your office.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
If, one final question. If this ordinance passes and in two or three years the plants are in compliance, I know this is sort of asking for speculation, but how many lives do you anticipate will be saved? And how many fewer cases of respiratory diseases will we have experienced?
That's a question that I'm not going to be able to answer today. The estimations made are relative to the contributions here. You would expect substantial reductions to occur. Unfortunately, asthma and COPD and heart attacks, as you know, are multifactorial. So there are a variety of causation of this situation. And I haven't done the precise work to be able to say to you exactly how many will be saved.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Doctor.[1056.00][1056.00](applause) All right. Next, I'd like to call up to the witness chair, Dr. Sarah Lovinger. Doctor, please identify yourself for the record and your position, if any, or if you're representing any organization.
Hello, I'm Dr. Sarah Lovinger. I am an internal medicine physician. And I am the executive director of the Chicago Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility, or PSR. I would like to thank Alderman Joe Moore and the rest of the Clean Power Coalition for inviting me to speak today. And I'd like to thank you all for coming. My colleague, Dr. Peter Oris, did a great job of filling us all in on the health effects of the coal-fired power plants here in Chicago. It's not just asthma, as he mentioned. Also, we, Chicagoans suffer from the ill effects of the power plants. It takes a toll on people with emphysema, heart disease, cardiovascular disease such as stroke. And of course, these coal-fired power plants emit neurotoxins into our soil and into our water supply. And these neurotoxins are extremely harmful for the developing fetus and for babies. And all of that is captured here in this report, put out by the National Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. And I will be adding this to the record. I'm here to talk to you today about another aspect of our health, and that is about the links between the coal-fired power plants that we have in Chicago and nationally and climate change and human health. So coal-fired power plants in the U.S. account for about a third of greenhouse gas emissions. And why is that important? Because greenhouse gas emissions are responsible for climate change. And according to the World Health Organization, climate change kills at least 150,000 people worldwide annually. And of course, that's only increasing. And that's why we need clean power. So how do, why do people die from climate change? Well, so it changes water patterns. So people die in floods. They die because of drought, because they don't have access to clean water. They die from crop failures, from the combination of floods and drought. They die from infectious disease rates increasing, such as malaria. And they die in heat waves. Well, heat waves are familiar to us. In 1995, Chicago experienced a heat wave where there were more than 500 excess deaths. That wasn't just any heat wave. That was a climate change heat wave. So for those of us here in this room who remember those eight incredibly hot days, who remember the trucks lined up outside of what was then Cook County Hospital, those were trucks refrigerating dead bodies because so many people died during that heat wave that the morgue couldn't accommodate all of those lost souls. So we need to clean up our coal plants so that we don't experience more climate change heat waves, so that we don't have more excess deaths. A recent EPA study showed that as climate change ensues, we will have, by the, within the next 30 years, those rates could skyrocket. We could have 3,700 people dying in the U.S. annually from heat waves. So as you consider the future of green power in this city and as, keep in mind that 150,000 people die every year from climate change and that the right thing to do is to clean up these coal plants for everybody's health and to support the Clean Power Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.[1313.00][1313.00](applause) Doctor, doctor?
Oh, questions?
Any questions? I just have one, and I don't know if this is within your expertise, but could you elaborate just a little bit with respect to climate change on the difference between weather and climate? Because we often hear people who very seriously say, "Well, look, Chicago is going through right now a very, very cold winter. Temperatures rarely have risen above freezing." Where's the global warming? Could you elaborate a little bit about that?
So it's going to be 52 on Friday.
That's true.
So that's unusual for all of us who grew up here. So weather refers to the temperature, the humidity, the precipitation, all of those factors that you can experience at a given time and place. So right now, in Chicago, at 11:00 a.m., it's 37 degrees. It's cloudy. That's weather. Climate is really, over time, what those conditions are. So weather and climate are very different in that respect.
So climate looks at more of the averages over time, not a specific day, or for that matter, a specific season and specific year. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Next, Patricia Mendez. And then we'll be hearing from Terry Bradley, who's already up there. Very good, very well-prepared.[1415.98][1415.98](laughter) Okay, Ms. Mendez, please identify yourself for the record and organizational affiliation, if any.
Good morning, my name is Patricia Mendez.
You're going to need to speak into the microphone. And, oh, don't be nervous. We're all very nice up here. We're among friends.
Okay, yes. My name is Patricia Mendez, and I'm with the group, by the name of Guperro. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed, but not surprised, that Alderman Solis isn't here. Just had to throw that out there. I'm a longtime resident. I was born and raised in Pilsen. I have two children. And I grew up in a family where we were very health-oriented. We maintained a healthy lifestyle. Yet my father has emphysema. I have asthma, hyperthyroidism. My sister had tumors. And when I was married, my husband was from the Caribbean. When we moved into Pilsen, he developed asthma, severe, just respiratory issues. And when he went to the doctor, the doctor actually told him that that was due to the poor air quality in Pilsen, the pollution caused by the coal plants. So I just, it bothers me that it has to come to this. I just wish that, again, Alderman Solis would be right and be concerned more about the people in the neighborhood. And, I mean, we can't donate thousands of dollars to his campaign. I understand that. But it should be about the voters and not about the donations. And I wish that he would just do what's right, is my opinion.[1515.41][1515.41](applause) And it's, again, just in closing, I want to say that loyalty should be to the people, the voters, that are affected by the contamination, not by the ones poisoning it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Next up is Terry Bradley. And then after that, Kathleen McCarthy. You guys are so well organized.[1545.76][1545.76](laughter)
Good morning.
Good morning. Please identify yourself for the record and if you are representing any organization.
I'm Terry Bradley, and I am representing my children.
Oh, very good.
And I would like to reiterate or reinforce what she said, that I'm extremely disappointed that the aldermen of the city could not make this a priority in their schedule. Thank you to those of you who have. You know, it wasn't easy for us to get here today either. So I wish that they could have stepped off the campaign trail for a short time just to come and hear something this important. I have two beautiful young daughters, Mackenzie, who is 12, and Anika, who is 9. They were both born with cystic fibrosis, which is a genetic life-shortening illness that affects the respiratory system and the pancreas. Each day, both of my girls have to do two chest physical therapy treatments. They do three to five nebulizers a day, four inhalers, and they also take about 40 different medications every day. CF children are actually born with healthy lungs. It's the damage caused by excess mucus from colds, infections, allergies, and polluted air that build up a sticky mucus inside their lungs and eat away at the lung tissue. By their late teens, many children with CF need lung transplants or they are hospitalized every six to eight weeks to do what is called a tune-up to clear the mucus out of their lungs. My husband and I work extremely hard with our doctors, our teachers, our Girl Scout leaders, our activity organizers to keep the respiratory health of our girls strong. We're vigilant with hand cleaners, air purifiers. We stay away from other people who are sick. We don't do daycare. And we work really hard to be sure that they live a long and healthy life. The one thing that we have little control over is the amount of pollution that's in the air. And that's something that I am hoping all of you, with your voices and the aldermen here with their votes, can change. Both Mackenzie and Anika love Chicago, and the girls have lived in Lincoln Park all their lives. They often comment on how beautiful the city is because we get out and enjoy a lot of the things that the city has to offer on a regular basis. But before we can go out on any given day, we have to check the Weather Channel. And what are we looking for? The Fine Particulate Scale, which lets us know if the air is unhealthy for sensitive groups. And I don't know if you've ever seen that. But if you watch the weather, you will see a special box for Fine Particulate Scale. And that tells you how much soot pollution is in the air. The girls can't go outside when the pollution from the coal plants emit too many fine particulates into the air. They can't play in the parks and playgrounds. They can't go on the Ferris wheel at Navy Pier. They can't splash in Millennium Park Fountain. They can't go to the Diversey Mini Golf. We can't go to the Cultural Center art festivals. We are homebound because of the pollution in the air. Currently, Mackenzie's in the 7th grade, and they are studying the state and federal constitution. So each night, I sit with her, and we talk about how our government works. She knows that I'm here today and what I'm talking about. She knows that I'm here because two big businesses are being allowed to break the law by exceeding federal health standards on pollution. What should I say to her? How can I explain why our city allows people, big businesses, to break the law? I mean, should I say "politics"? It doesn't seem like the right thing to explain to a 7th grader. What am I supposed to say to them when they're teenagers and they need lung transplants because their own city contributed to the pollution that damaged their lungs? Both my daughters are on the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School Eco Action Team, and they get up at 6:30 every Friday morning to go and save the world. These 4th through 8th graders work hard, really hard, to make the world a better place, one school at a time. If these nine-year-olds are out in our community working toward clean air and clean water, accepting and creating new green technologies for a healthy and better future... und besserer Zukunft, das wenig, das wenig, was wir als ihre Rollmodelle tun können, ist das Gleiche zu tun. Vielen Dank.
Vielen Dank. Ms. Bradley? Ms. Bradley? Sie sind noch nicht frei. Sie sind noch nicht verschlossen. Alderman Moreno, hast du eine Frage?
Erstens, vielen Dank für das Erzählen dieser Geschichte, und, Sie wissen, Entschuldigung kann nicht helfen, deine Tochter oder deine Familien. Aber ich würde nur eine einfache Frage stellen. Auf, sagen wir, einen typischen Sommer, Sie wissen, die drei Monate, in denen sie aus der Schule sind, wie viele Tage sind sie auf der Ebene, nicht in der Lage, aus dem Great City zu gehen, in der wir haben?
Ich muss sagen, dass es variiert, je nach Wetter. Es auch auf die Ozone-Aktion-Datei hängt, weil wir auch nicht aus dem High Pollution von Smog gehen können. Die Ozone-Aktion-Datei. Ich würde sagen, in den drei Monaten, Juni bis August, also die Zeit, in der sie aus der Schule sind, gibt es wahrscheinlich zwölf Tage. Und normalerweise, Anfang Juni, wenn sie in der Schule sind, gibt es normalerweise ein oder zwei Tage, wenn wir das gleiche haben. Im Gegenteil, letztes Jahr hatten sie ein Feuerdrill am einen Tag, und beide meine Tochterinnen fuhren und mussten sie aus dem Feuerdrill-Netz nehmen und sie zurück in die Schule, wegen dessen.
Any other questions? Ich habe einen. Welches Nachbarschaftsbereich leben Sie?
Linkin Park.
Linkin Park. Ich denke, das ist wichtig, dass, klar, das ist ein Thema der Sorge für das kleine Village in Pilsen, aber es ist wirklich ein Thema der Sorge für alle Nachbarschaften in der Stadt und in der ganzen Region, weil der Luft nicht die Grenzen kennt.
Ja.
Und so, ich appreciere, dass du Zeit nimmst und uns deine Geschichte erzählt hast.
Vielen Dank, danke für mich.
Okay. Okay, vielen Dank fürs Befinden. Bitte identifiziere dich für den Rekord.
Mein Name ist Kathleen McCarthy, und ich lebe in der Linkin Square Nachbarschaft, am Nordosten von Chicago. Ich bin Mutter von drei kleinen Kindern, und zwei meiner drei Kinder haben Asthma. Mein ältester Sohn Eddie hat ein sehr geringes Problem, und er braucht nichts mehr als ein occasional Inhalatoren. Mein neunjährige Sohn Jack ist mehr mit seinem Asthma beteiligt. Unsere Einladung zum Weltall für Kinder mit Asthma kam, als er zwei Jahre alt war. Was ein normales Schmerz turned zu einem akuten Asthmaattacke zu werden, der drei Tage lang an den Kindern gebracht wurde. Jack wurde auf kontinuierliche Durchbrechenstherapie, wie auch Oxyd, gesteckt. Er wurde an einem Puls-Oxygen-Meter gesteckt, das die Prozent des Oxy in seinem Blut messte. Wenn die Oxyleveln gefährlich niedrig waren, kommen viele Mitarbeiter hinein, um ihm zu helfen. Jack ist jetzt neun Jahre alt, und er nimmt immer wieder oral, oh, tschuldigung, ein inhales Steroid jeden Tag, um den Schmerz in seinen Blutflügeln zu halten. Manchmal, wenn er krank ist, braucht er einen oralen Steroid, genannt Prednisone, in addition zu seinem rescue Inhalatoren, um seine Luftflügel zu halten. Die Nebenwirkungen von Prednisone sind unbesaglich, besonders auf ein Kind. Wir tun immer wieder die tägliche Weihnachtsstrecke zum ER. Ein Freund sagte einmal, dass wir Stunden in der waiting room im ER verbracht haben. Nein, erklärte ich ihr, ein akuter Asthmaattacke ist lebensgefährlich. Wir haben nie für ein ER medizinisches Zuschauen gewartet. Die Realität ist, dass Jack ein extrem glückliches Kind ist. Unsere Familie hat gute Access, Zugang zu Qualität medizinisches Zuschauen. Wir haben uns darüber geübt, was wir mit seinen Trügeln machen können. Wir sind in der Lage, Jack ein gesundes In-North-Ortner zu geben. Zum Beispiel, wir leben in einer Wohnung ohne Fenster, keine Tiere, wir würden nie einen Rauch in unserer Wohnung erlauben. Sein Bett ist mit besonderen Schmutzprotektanten-Dosen angepasst, und er hat kein verkrümmtes Tier in seinem Bett, was ihm sein Asthma beitragen könnte. Er sieht seine Asthma-Specialisten regelmäßig, und wir sicherstellen, dass all seine Medikamente up-to-date und richtig behandelt werden. Jedoch haben mein Mann und ich keine Kontrolle über die Qualität des Luftheißes, im Backraum, auf dem Ballfeld, im Schulplayground. Ihr, jedoch, tun es. Wir brauchen Sie, um einige Ihrer am meisten schwierigen Mitglieder zu verteidigen, von diesen besonders schadenhaften Verletzungen, die heute diskutiert werden. Ich fordere Sie, Ihre Autorität zu nutzen, um das beste Umfeld für Jack und andere, die seine potenziell lebensgefährliche Schwäche, Powerplantverletzung, zu fördern. Vielen Dank.
Vielen Dank. Und, oh, 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 nicht ganz. Ich habe eine Frage für Sie. Und welches Nachbarschaftsbereich in der Stadt leben Sie?
Ich lebe am Nordosten in Linkin Square. Also, wie Sie gesagt haben, und wie Terry gesprochen hat, wir sind ein windiger Stadt, und der Wind kann all diese Verletzungen zu vielen Seiten der Stadt und außerhalb bringen.
Vielen Dank. Es ist, Herr, bitte, yes, all right. Warren Levy, bitte identifiziere dich für den Rekord und die Organisation, die du repräsentierst.
Danke. Ich bin Warren Levy, Senior Fellow und Senior Attorney at the Environmental Law and Policy Center in Chicago. Ich bin Ko-author von einem Report auf die öffentliche Gesundheitskosten von Fisk and Crawford. Sie haben bereits von Ärzten und Müttern gehört. Ich werde über Geld sprechen. Geld, habe ich Ihre Aufmerksamkeit? Das ELPC Support, oder Report, unterstützt die vorgeschlagenen Ordnungen. Residenz throughout Chicago, zusammen mit anderen Menschen, die in der Stadt arbeiten oder in der Umgebung leben, zahlen eine enorme Preis, estimiert an etwa 127 Millionen Dollar jährlich für diese Plantenoperation und Output, in den Lebens- und Gesundheit von Individuen, verlorenen Arbeits- und Schuletagen, und durch andere Schäden der menschliche Gesundheit. Es ist sowohl ökonomisch ineffizient als auch schlimmer Schaden von Chicagoleben, dass Fisk and Crawford erlaubt, Particulate-Matter in die Luft zu spüren. Die öffentlichen Gesundheitsschädnisse, die sie verursachen, wurden wissenschaftlich bestätigt und lange vorher von der Harvard School of Public Health Illinois Power Plant Study, und mehr recently von US EPA Science Panels und the National Research Council. Dieses Tablett zeigt die estimates of health damages from Fisk and Crawford in 2005, about 127 Million Dollar in current dollars. The US EPA found that a proposed restriction on coal power plants would annually avoid 14,000 to 36,000 premature deaths nationally, and yield health benefits valued at 50 to 100 times the costs of compliance, a huge margin of benefits over costs. Despite this scientific knowledge, the Chicago City Council, as well as the state and federal governments, have allowed high levels of harmful pollutants from Fisk and Crawford. Each year from 2002 through 2009 was worse than 1999. The Fisk and Crawford pollutants have caused about $1 billion in health costs to the public since 2002. These cost estimates do not include environmental and public health damages from climate change. Chicago should enact the Clean Air Ordinance, reduce the economic and human tolls imposed by pollution from these coal power plants, and improve public health. Vielen Dank.
Vielen Dank. Questions? Alderman Clone.
Ich bin nur interessiert, die Methoden, die Sie an diese Nummern erzielen.
Sure. The National Research Council was asked by Congress in 2005 to prepare an analysis of coal power plants and their health impacts throughout the country. They modeled 406 power plants and came up with specific models for Fisk and for Crawford. So, diese Nummern sind von der National Research Council, die von der National Academy of Science administriert wird, und ist eines der most preeminenten wissenschaftlichen Körper. Das sind die Modelle, die, Sie wissen, die haben entwickelt, Sie wissen, studiert, die Emissionen von diesen Planten, die betroffenen Populationen, und bezahlt Kosten für die verschiedenen Gesundheitsergebnisse, von Mord bis Respiratorie und Cardiovascular Krankheiten, und verlorene Arbeitsstage und andere Gesundheitsergebnisse. Danke.
Und vielen Dank für deine Testimony. Ich weiß, es gibt viele, oft wenn wir zusätzliche Regulationen an Industrie setzen, um die öffentliche Gesundheit zu verteidigen, hören Sie immer von Industrie über die zusätzlichen Kosten für sie, und, und, und vielleicht, und dann durch Ausweitung auf die Ratebeträger, durch diese zusätzlichen Anforderungen. Aber sehr selten hören Sie die andere Seite der Geschichte, die die enormen finanziellen Kosten sind, die nicht, im, im, in, 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 in,
The asthma rates in my neighborhood are nearly double that of the national average. Forty people die each year from these plants. Hundreds more end up in the hospital due to asthma attacks, mostly on the south and southwest sides of the city. I have a hard time believing that if these plants were in fact located on the north side of the city, that they would not have already been cleaned up by now. I believe that this is more than just an environmental issue, this is an issue of social justice. One of our core values in this nation is government that is of the people, for the people, and by the people. As such, protecting the health and welfare of its citizens is not only a responsibility of the city's government, but a moral obligation as well. If all humans have the right to clean air and water, and more generally, the right to a safe environment regardless of race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status, then immediate attention must be given to this matter. Now, let me say that I understand the importance of jobs. On the south side of Chicago, there is one job for every six people. And Seoul has and continues to work to promote the creation of living wage work. But if Midwest generation cannot do their business in a safe way, then I believe they should leave our communities. It's time for Chicago to lead the way toward a clean energy future. We need clean and healthy jobs here in the city that will not contaminate our air or poison our water. Jobs like weatherization, where people are paid to insulate homes, which lowers people's energy bills and reduces our environmental impact. That's why Seoul has worked with legislators to pass what is called the Urban Weatherization Initiative, part of the state's capital budget that will provide hundreds of millions of dollars to weatherization efforts in low-income areas. Many consider Chicago to be a world-class city. But if Chicago truly is a world-class city, then it would clean up these two coal plants and work to bring good, sustainable, living wage jobs to all Chicagoans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Damon, for your powerful testimony and for reminding us once again that this affects all communities in the city of Chicago. Any questions? You've said it all. Thank you very much. I'd like to next bring up Claudio Martinez. Mr. Martinez, thank you for being here. Please identify yourself for the record and what organization, if any, you are representing.
Hello? Can you hear me? There you go. My name is Claudio Martinez. I'm a risk analyst with the Union of Concerned Scientists, with over a quarter of a million supporters nationwide. UCS is a leading nonprofit partnership of scientists and citizens, working for a healthier environment and a safer world. We thank Alderman Joe Moore and the Chicago Clean Power Coalition for the effort put into holding today's hearing and the opportunity to provide brief comments. The Union of Concerned Scientists supports the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance that requires the two coal-fired power plants in Chicago, Fisk and Crawford, to reduce their soot and global warming emissions. Man-made global warming is caused by an overload of carbon and other heat-trapping emissions in the atmosphere that are released when we burn fossil fuels such as coal in power plants. Carbon dioxide acts like a blanket that traps heat in our atmospheres and oceans and warms our planet. Oceans, forests, and land can absorb some of this carbon, but not as fast as we are creating it, leading to a steadily increased seen carbon dioxide concentrations in the air. The city of Chicago and its six surrounding counties are responsible for roughly 103 million metric tons of heat-trapping greenhouse gases per year. Global temperatures, as well as temperatures in Chicago, are already warming and are expected to keep on rising over the coming decades as human emissions of heat-trapping gases continue. If carbon emissions are left unchecked, climate change in Illinois will most likely have negative impacts for its citizens, including increased air pollution, heavier downpours and flooding, changing drought patterns, changes in plant and animal species, including a wider spread of pest and disease, and dangerously hot summers with deadly heat waves, all of which would negatively impact Illinois' public health and agriculture. Heat waves are especially lethal in cities, where urban landscapes absorb more heat during the day and are less effective in releasing it at night. This is known as the heat island effect. On average, Chicago experienced 15 days a year over 90 degrees between 1960 and 1990. In 2009, the UCS, Union of Concerned Studies, in a study concluded that if heat-trapping emissions continue on their current trajectory, Chicago could experience 25 days a year over 90 degrees in the next decades, and that number could rise to over 70 days a year with temperatures above 90 degrees by the end of the century. Our current fossil fuel has us on this high-emissions scenario path. If Chicago's climate is already changing, many of the defining characteristics of the city are being altered. We are seeing decreases in winter ice coverage over Lake Michigan and smaller lakes in the area. We are also experiencing more frequent and heavier precipitation, with heavy rainfall events doubling over the last 100 years. In fact, the Midwest as a region has had a 31% increase in the amount of heavy precipitation in the last 50 years, as reported in the most recent U.S. National Assessment Report by the U.S. Global Change Research Program. To help prevent the worst consequences of a change in climate, the Union of Concerned Scientists supports the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance that requires that Fisk and Crawford coal plants to reduce soot and global warming emissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would, as I said before, in asking witnesses, if you do have some prepared remarks, if you could share them with, copies of them with the committee, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Including some of the studies I referenced.
Wonderful. That's very helpful. Thank you very much. We'll take them there. Thanks. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Becky Claiborne. And then after Becky, we're looking for Mike Johnson and Mark Berger. Thank you. Please identify yourself for the record and your organization affiliation, if any.
My name is Becky Claiborne. I'm a regional representative with the Sierra Club's Beyond Coal Campaign. On behalf of Sierra Club's over 1 million members and supporters, I would like to thank Alderman Joe Moore and his colleagues for holding this hearing about the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance. I especially want to thank all of you that are here today for hours, listening to why this ordinance is so important. You are the reason an ordinance like this will get passed. Without the people, this will not happen. Sierra Club is the oldest and largest grassroots environmental organization in America, and we are working hard to protect our water, our air, and our land for future generations. Our top priority has evolved to be global warming and energy issues, most importantly, the need for America to transition away from coal to a clean energy future. Coal plants are a focus of the Sierra Club due to the life cycle of environmental damage that accompanies burning coal. Mining coal, burning coal, and disposing of coal ash affects us at every step, scarring our lungs, tearing up our land, polluting water, devastating communities, and increasing global warming pollution. Coal mining almost always leads to polluted surface waters due to the massive land movement that occurs with removing coal from the land, whether it's from strip mining, mountaintop removal mining, or longwall mining. All of these mining practices disrupt the natural hydrology of the land, which often leads to compromised drinking water supplies. Burning coal leads to emissions of toxic and harmful pollutants that affect not only people living near the power plants, but also the people on a global level. Coal-fired power plants are responsible for almost 40% of our carbon dioxide emissions, which is a major global warming pollutant. Top scientists have been warning us for years that we need to cut global warming emissions 80% by 2050 to avoid the most detrimental effects of global warming. These two power plants emit almost 5 million tons of CO2 per year, which is like adding another 1.8 million cars to our roads. Regulating the CO2 emissions from coal-fired power plants is crucial to the successful reduction of global warming pollution. Chicago has long been a supporter of global warming reduction strategies, and this ordinance should just be part of that plan. Once coal is burned, there's the problem of disposing of the toxic ash, coal ash, which often contains arsenic, mercury, and carcinogenic materials. Across the country, millions of tons of coal ash are being stored in precarious surface waste pounds, impoundments, and abandoned mines. These put human health at risk from potential large-scale disasters and from gradual, yet equally dangerous contamination as the coal ash toxins seep into drinking water sources. Coal ash disposal is woefully underregulated, therefore, we don't even know where the coal ash from these facilities in Chicago is going. But you can be sure that on its way to most likely pollute another community's water source, it's traveling through our neighborhoods surrounding these power plants, leaving a toxic cloud of dust in its wake. Which brings me to my final point, how this is affecting the local community. The local health impacts are of very high concern for the Sierra Club, especially when more than 50,000 people live within a mile of these old, outdated, grandfathered coal-fired power plants. This is the highest population of people living around any power plant anywhere in the U.S., and there is absolutely no reason that the city of Chicago cannot stand up and protect its residents by passing the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance. Old coal-fired power plants like Crawford and Fisk have been enjoying practically a free ride in pollution control for 40 years. They were grandfathered in when the Clean Air Act was created, which meant that while new plants had to control their pollution, these plants were able to spew its pollution into our neighborhoods. And even when the smallest amount of regulation was put on these power plants, they continued to pollute. These plants have violated their opacity standards thousands of times by their own admission, but after years of litigation, the problem still has not been corrected. It's time for Chicago to take this into their own hands and protect its residents. Burning coal to make energy is the dirtiest method of creating energy, and as you can see, it affects our local populations, but also affects mining communities, coal ash disposal communities, and truly the globe. Yes, there was a time that burning coal was necessary and important, but this is the 21st century. There are much better ways to create energy. Renewable energy, energy efficiency, and conservation are all clean and reliable sources of energy that have significantly fewer pollutants associated with them. We just need to make this transition away from coal to clean energy, and Chicago is a perfect place to start. We call on the city of Chicago to help protect the health of over 50,000 people living within a mile of these plants, the health of Chicagoans everywhere, but ultimately, we call on the city of Chicago to help move our country and our planet to a cleaner energy future by passing the Chicago Clean Power Ordinance. Thank you.
I just have one question because I saw it was not in your prepared remarks, but you testified the statistic about the amount of pollution emitted from these plants, or carbon dioxide emitted from these plants is equivalent to 1.5 million cars?
Yep, over 1.5 million cars.
And was this a study conducted by whom?
These are actually numbers, I did the calculation with numbers from the U.S. EPA on how much carbon dioxide is emitted per car on average, and I just figured out that 5 million tons from the power plants equals about 1.8 million cars.
That's an amazing statistic, and tells you the importance of getting those plants cleaned up. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Johnson, please. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for being here, and please state your name for the record and what group, if any, you're representing.
My name is Mike Johnson, and I represent Greenpeace. Hopefully, I can get the microphone to work.
Just, all you gotta do is just talk real close to it, especially if you have a soft voice.
All right. Well, great. Thanks, Alderman Moore, Alderman Burnett, and Alderman Cologne. It's a pleasure to be here with you and with the supporters that we have here today to address this very important issue of Fisk and Crawford. And actually, I was pleased to play a role in developing that plan when I worked for the city of Chicago and the Department of Environment in my five years of service to the city. And I'm very proud of the progress that the city has made in protecting public health and the climate through a variety of cost-effective strategies. From home weatherization through the Energy Action Network to the Green Office Challenge, Chicago residents and businesses have saved millions of dollars a year while reducing thousands of tons of greenhouse gas emissions. At the same time, political gamesmanship by some key figures absent from this hearing threatens progress on Fisk and Crawford at a time when continued progress is sorely needed. Much of the critical work to meet the city's goal of reducing emissions to 25% below 1990 levels by 2020 remains to be accomplished. Along that journey, Fisk and Crawford, the two largest stationary sources of greenhouse gases in the city of Chicago, simply cannot be ignored. To add insult to injury, Fisk and Crawford do nothing to keep lights on for Chicago residents and businesses. By virtue of the Burnham-Taylor 345-kilovolt transmission line, Fisk and Crawford also have a negligible impact on electric system reliability. That said, it is only natural to ask how Fisk and Crawford figure in bridging the 7.4 million metric ton of carbon dioxide equivalent gap between business-as-usual and the city's 2012 emissions reduction target. Rightly so, the Chicago Climate Action Plan views the energy sector as the largest opportunity for reducing emissions. At 4.79 million tons of carbon dioxide from October 2009 to September 2010, Fisk and Crawford churned out more than 10% of Chicago's greenhouse gas emissions. To put this in perspective, Fisk and Crawford generate about 18 times the emissions of O'Hare's ground operations, or nearly 36 times the emissions of the merchandise mart and Willis Tower combined at full occupancy. Put another way, closing Fisk and Crawford would offset 2/3 of the emissions generated by all modes of transportation in Chicago. But no matter which way you cut it, it always makes sense to start with low-hanging fruit when approaching emissions reductions. With Fisk and Crawford, quite frankly, that fruit is underfoot. Wholesale reductions in citywide emissions cannot be achieved by nibbling at the margins, which is why action on Fisk and Crawford should precede costlier endeavors. Doing so will send a strong signal that the city has the political will to empower its environmental agenda, and that the future of the energy in Chicago, indeed in the present, lies in energy efficiency and renewable energy. Closing Fisk and Crawford altogether would achieve nearly 2/3 of the 7.4 million ton emission reduction target for 2012, and would generate 2.5 million tons of reductions not even contemplated in the Chicago Climate Action Plan. Currently, the plan is silent on a deadline for reducing emissions at Fisk and Crawford, but it can be assumed that 2020 is the latest possible date, given the scope of the plan. But unfortunately, by waiting until 2020 to close Fisk and Crawford, at that point, the plants will have cost Chicagoans more than $1 billion in healthcare costs, basically as much as they've already cost the city over the past 10 years. And as such, city council should deny Midwest generation another opportunity to make false promises and shutter these plants altogether. So, Greenpeace calls on the city to pass the Clean Power Ordinance without delay. Thanks for being, the opportunity to speak with you today.
Mr. Johnson, refresh my recollection, when did you work for the Department of Environment?
Between 2002 and 2007.
And so now that you're no longer with the Department of Environment, maybe I can ask you for a candid assessment as to why there has been no movement in light of the Climate Action Plan, which is an admirable document with some admirable goals, why there has been no movement against these two major causes of global warming?
Well, I think a lot of that lies in a lot of the dirty money that underlies the politics associated with these plants, and the fact that Alderman Solis has accepted campaign contributions from Midwest generation and has worked closely with him in political operations in the ward. So, I think it's not surprising that you get the policy that you pay for. And in this case, unfortunately, it comes at the cost of public health in both Pilsen and Little Village.
Appreciate that candid answer. I was more directing my question toward, not just an individual Alderman, but a little bit higher up, your former boss.
Well, you know, I think it's admirable, a lot of the things that have been done with respect to sustainability in the city, obviously, a lot of progress has been made. But, you know, unfortunately, when you're operating with a budget as small as environments and you're up against a lot of jockeying from the fifth floor of this building and other places, it's hard to find voice for that agenda. And I think a lot of the people assembled here today can give voice to the fact that this is an issue that is of critical importance, both today and for well into the future.
Thank you for your testimony, your service to the citizens of the city.
Thank you.
Mark Berger. Is that correct? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Berger. Please identify yourself for the record and your organizational affiliation, if any.
My name is Mark Berger, president of the Illinois Solar Energy Association, a chapter of the American Solar Energy Society. I wish to thank the Chicago City Council and Chicago Clean Power Coalition for the opportunity to speak. And by the way, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
There you go. Happy Valentine's Day.
There are many ways to replace the coal-generated electricity from the outdated coal and Fisk Power Plants. A portfolio of energy efficiency and renewable energy options would provide environmental benefits, significant job creation, economic development, and protection against higher electricity prices due to rising global demand. A portfolio of technologies is the best way to go, but such is their commercial viability that almost any one technology can potentially achieve replacement. Solar photovoltaic systems can replace the electric output of the Fisk and Crawford Power Plants. Their 971 megawatts generated over 4 million megawatt-hours from October 2009 through September 2010, a 48% capacity factor. That coal electricity can be generated by about 3,100 megawatts of photovoltaic systems based on a 15% capacity factor. At 1 megawatt of capacity, over 2.2 acres, roughly a football field, over 6,800 acres of space is required, or about 10 and 1/2 square miles, or about 5% of Chicago's land area. Where would this coverage come from without threatening parks or other desirable open land? There can be the equivalent of over 300 10-megawatt Exelon power parks that generate solar electricity in various sizes. There are thousands of acres of brownfields still available for development, as well as thousands of acres of parking lots at our airports and major shopping locations. There are also thousands of flat-roof industrial and commercial buildings that can support large-scale installations. A minimum five-to-10-year timeframe is recommended for proper supply chain development and cost structure. The cost for solar multi-megawatt systems is as low as $3 to $4 million per megawatt. The replacement cost of Fisk and Crawford could be at least $5 million per megawatt, possibly more, due to additional technologies like carbon sequestration. Combined with likely future coal prices of $50, $100, or more dollars a ton due to global demand, the cost of generating solar electricity over a 20- to 30-year period may actually be lower than coal-generated power, certainly less volatile. The biggest economic benefits to this photovoltaic boom would be design, installation, and service jobs. At 20 to 25 job years per megawatt of solar installation, that could mean 6,000 to 7,500 post-manufacturing jobs for 10 years in Chicago. Manufacturing jobs would be extra. These $9 to $12 billion of investments could be financed through federal tax credits and accelerated depreciation, state industrial revenue bonds, selling electricity through power purchase agreements or renewable energy credits, and property-assessed clean energy tax financing. Commercially available dispatch and storage technologies can address intermittency issues, including lithium batteries, flywheels, and electrolyte battery systems, providing hours and days of power dispatching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. And so you represent the Association of Solar Energy Producers, or Equipment Producers here in the city, or in the state, or nationally? What is the reach of your organization?
The reach is, we are the Illinois chapter of the American Solar Energy Society.
And how many solar companies are within the city limits of Chicago? Do you know offhand?
Roughly about 25 installers. Most of them are small, some of them are larger. A lot of them are, for example, electrical contractors, members of NICA and IBW Local 134.
Any manufacturers of parts?
There are really no manufacturers within the city of Chicago as far as solar panels. There is a manufacturing plant in Rockford, Illinois. There is one in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. There is going to be one in Indiana. But really, the big job generators are not so much in the manufacturing, but in the assembly and service. That's where you, it's like the Ford plant, they don't make engines, they're an assembly plant essentially. That's where the big job generator is going to be. Though, I would imagine if the city of Chicago would put something like this in place, it's very likely they will also attract manufacturing jobs if they are assured of a long-term market. That's what happened in California, and Germany, and other places like that.
Well, thank you. And certainly, your testimony speaks to an issue that often comes up in the situation, that's the issue of jobs. And a clean power means good-paying jobs, and at a time when we desperately need more good-paying, living-wage jobs in the city, this provides a ready source of those jobs. So, I appreciate your testimony today. Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Alderman Cologne.
I just was wondering if there had been any efforts from the Illinois Solar Energy Association to present this proposal that you presented today to Fisk and Crawford? Has there been any dialogue with regards to this?
No, this actually, we were invited a few days ago, so this is kind of a back-of-the-envelope type of assessment. We are a small organization, we only have one paid staffer, so something can be developed that would require some resources. But also, I think it needs to be kept in mind that in the last few years, the costs of solar electricity has dropped dramatically and makes this a all-market reality if there's policy to support it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.